Or put it at your best effort forward to get the information, but you do have the option just put unknown service line material on here. I just don't know what that's going to entail outside of after the October 16th date, you have to provide a 30 day notice that, hey, we don't know what your service line is. And there's supposed to be a template that EPA is supposed to provide as to what, you know, the language you're supposed to say, but I don't think they haven't released that yet.
So what you're saying is we don't actually have to do this?
Well, you so you have to turn something in. You have to fill out, you have to have somebody fill out this Excel template with every address that you have in the city and you have to fill out every piece of information. But the effort that you've put to determine the service line is kind of up to the city. But I just can't tell you what the consequences are if you put forth no effort. So if you say, we're not going to spend any time and effort to figure out what all the service lines are, you know, after that October 16th, I don't know what the consequences are for them. Because the EPA hasn't told anybody. So nobody knows what the consequences of that are. They just have stated their goals are to, they want all like outward service lines replaced within 10 years. But that is also not a rule that's applicable. So there's, so there's a lot of communities, like if you go to CTC Rapids or any of the large municipalities around here, they've got a website, on our city website, they've got, you know, a place for all residents to fill out. They're being very proactive, but they also have just a large magnitude, a large number of older facilities, including, you know, if you think of downtown, they potentially have a very large project to tackle. Smaller towns are kind of just, it's this, you know, it's no small town, there's not a consistent way of doing it.
Of course, maybe this is more for Sandy, my guess and knowledge, than that. If we get resistance from the citizens, you know, the residents, and they don't want that in, is there a way that we could tie that into future sales of the home? You know, like, like an upgrade, you know, electrical, you know, if once a home goes up for sale, it has to meet certain electrical codes and stuff. Like, you can't sell a house right now for-
Some states allow, require-
You see what I'm saying? I just wondered if that inspection could be part of that process.
As of today, no.
Okay.
But once, this is, this is the, this is the, I think, the issue behind all this is EPA doesn't have, hasn't like finished-
Right.
-anything about this. So I'm trying to be honest with, you know, you guys, I know you guys are trying to spend money, it's not that I don't want. I would be happy, we're going to help you guys regardless if we prove this, Todd calls me and asks me a question, I'm going to answer it, but the truth of matter is, I don't know what to, I don't know what, what's going to happen after October 16th.
It's going to have to happen.
Well, I don't, yeah, and I don't, what you just said, I don't want anybody at this table to think that Todd Damon can do this work. We don't have time, that's not a staffing expertise that we can provide, so in-house, I will try, we're not able to fulfill this requirement by then.
I'm not seeing the requirement. I'm on the Iowa site and I don't see a requirement to have that done. The only thing it refers back to is the lead and copper rule, and the lead and copper rule is actually stating that you have to take samples at the-
So the first, look at, I mean, are you looking at the packet, the cities, in their scope of services, what they wrote was, on January 15th, 2021, the United States Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, published revisions to the lead and copper rule, known as the lead and copper rule revisions. Through the LCIR, US EPA requires all community water systems to-
May I?
A comprehensive inventory of both publicly owned and privately owned service line materials regardless of ownership. The LCIR requires water systems to identify any lead, galvanized steel pipe requirements replacement, or lead status unknown service lines and to make the inventory information publicly available. So, I mean, maybe you should be able to find-
Yeah, he's, he's on the right page and it, it says here, it's the October 16th, 2024 compliance, what's submitting. I mean, it, it's, if you were to dig into all the EPA, you'd have to click on everything that's blue and, and go through it, but it is a, this is right off of the DNR's website and it says here, must, every, all community water supplies must develop a lead service line inventory by October 16th and submit to the Iowa DNR. These are both pulled off of the Iowa DNR's website, I only brought the one copies, but if you, they are in there.
I guess one of the things I want to make sure in all of our communications is there's nothing in this rule or their controls that will impact from the meter into the house.
I, I can't, I can't, I can't-
I mean, at this point in time, they're only concerned about the municipalities and, and from the meter to the main-
That's correct.
And, but see, that's what I'm saying is, if people get in there, then they're going to assume wrongly that we're trying to do something about their house or tell them what they have to have in their house, and I don't see that as the case.
As of today, I, that is, that's not the case, but as I just stated, there's currently no-
Yeah.
Outside of you have to fill out this inventory-
I'm, I'm just trying to be proactive and hit off a negative coming in here and have a best view there.
Correct.
And the, the particular action required has been something that's been published for a couple of years to the cities, and we've had several training meetings on both the EPA and the DNR requirements and what would satisfy the, the ruling. So it's something that we've been preparing for, for a couple of years now, and the time has come short and we do have the October-
Way other than physical view of the meter itself that's going to satisfy that, is there? I mean, we can say we don't know, but-
You can, if you have, if you have the resident, if we're, so we, so part of this is we're going to create a survey that you can send out. If the resident goes in there and clicks it and says, this is what it is, then that's what we would use. And then you could say, well, this residence, here's the survey result, the resident said this, this is the information we gave them, and then you can, you, we can put, this is what we know.
Okay.
Obviously, you know, like you said, we would do the meter-
Well, I might take a picture of the meter and then that's there and it tells you everything right there because I know what I've got and-
Right.
Copper going into the meter and peck's going out.
Yeah.
But if we, and it doesn't have to be the whole thing, you know, it has to be as a, like a, from the meter to the wall.
Between the meter and wherever it comes in or out of.
The wall, yeah. That might, if we do, that, that might be really simple, too. I think a lot of people would be okay with that. I'll do that, thank you.
Any other questions for Nick? About what the services proposal would provide?
All you're doing is sending out a survey to every, every house, right?
We'll take a-
Seven hundred surveys.
We'll do the survey, we'll compile the information, we'll fill out the spreadsheet, and then if there's not, if there's, you know, if there's any other data that the city has, we can certainly dig through that.
I apologize for being late. Did you walk through the scope of services with the council? It's in, it's in your packet.
I was, I hadn't walked through it, I was walking through it.
I mean, I think that's, I think the council member's question is, what, what does-
I just wanted to reaffirm what I read, okay? That's all I know.
Yes, so we're-
It's a little more, I mean, I, I'm counting on a little more than that.
Yeah, we're going to collect the data, we're going to send out surveys, we're going to fill out the forms, basically get it-
You're going to interview some people that you think know, engaged with the county assessor.
Yeah, we can talk with people if we need to, to get information. Hopefully, we can just send out a survey and, you know, we can provide information that we can send out with the survey, so people know what they're looking at and provide them examples and, you know, there's-
Yes, I would be willing to volunteer my services and expertise if any citizen wanted me to take pictures or to view it, I know what the lead and the copper and stuff looks like, I'd be willing to help fill out the forms to send to Nick's.
And my understanding, Nick, is that on this web portal that you'll put up, you'll have pictures.
Yeah.
If you want to go look at the city's, your act is website, it's been on for years now, and it has some great images, so a, a late person can go down and-
Yep.
See what they're looking at and-
We can certainly, you know, provide counsel, you know, provide, have residents at contact council if they would like just to help, you know, if they want that help, that's fine.
But, but that is part of your contract with us, is that you would provide a website that has this complete information, walk up person through it, so that if we're interested in helping others, we also are guided and have a-
Yeah, so we, we can create, we can create the website, then we could, we would have the, we can give council a kind of a preview, we can, I can walk through with you guys and then, you know, we can, we can make it live and then that way if people have questions, they can have, like, obviously, we can give them a contact with us or-
I'd be real interested in being asked the insight, too.
So.
Fourth was like-
I see that says, we'll establish and coordinate all communications deliverables to the, for the water customer, so that would include some handouts then and some paper items.
Yeah, we can, we can create a pamphlet to get-
That would be a thing to include with the water bills for those that are still mailed out, too, and then we could maybe put that on the-
We just do the little postcard, you know, do an envelope.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but I'm saying, we have that mailing list and that's so few and we could use the, the city water website and-
We'd only be able to do that if Snyder does, we can't do it in-house. What I would say is a paper copy for this population, I think, would be, I think, would be very welcome.
Yeah, we can, we can create both and then that way, they can have something that we can help you out or we can mail out whatever it is, how we can get that then. My dad was just looking on page two, we may need to adjust, there's an August 1st-
There's dates in there.
Yeah, that we will have to adjust those and then if, if you guys approve this, we can adjust those just because we're a little late to the game based on when we originally submitted the scope, so.
Do you have a date you'd suggest changing that to?
Um.
From August 1 to, or is it September 1, maybe?
Well, we have to do it by, so the, we have to do it by September 1 or have something ready by the 1st of Sep, towards 1st of September because we need to submit that spreadsheet to the EPA or to DNR by October 16th. Now, there's nothing that says we can't submit an updated version if we were to get information back. So we-
By November 15th, we could submit, this is what we have available, it's an ongoing that we're working and that would satisfy the October 15th, we still-
Yes.
Great, yeah, that sounds like a real plan. You'd be able to work right now.
So why $15,000? This seems like a lot of money to be honest, this.
Yeah, so the, there is, so this is based off of one we did for another community. That community we did, we spent a lot of time compiling a lot of paper records, so if we don't have to do that, then the cost does start to go down, but once you start having to gather information, compile it all, build the website, that's where a lot of the costs come into is getting the website, compiling data, filling out the data in the spreadsheet is, you know, it's a tedious process to go through. We did put it as an hourly estimate, so that it wouldn't be a lump sum type thing if we were able to get through it significantly faster than we did on previous ones we've done.
How big close to like, to other communities that you did it for?
Uh, like Tamens, Leito size, that range, so three, oh, they're like 3, 4,000 people somewhere there, so a few, a few more connections, but-
If we can get good community involvement with the new parts, that should go fairly smooth. The only thing I'm probably seeing is first remains second and then first to Forest Streets a couple of blocks, so there, that's going to be the, everything before 15th is going to be where the documentation and the stuff, if we can get the residents, okay, I don't see that's being a problem at the camp and, but there, we can push that out in October 2.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, we can, as long as we have something to submit to DNR, we can always update it, so.
How many homes, how many homes fall in under the 1988 in this town?
I, I honestly don't have that off the top of my head. I would imagine it would be-
Because the assumption would be, obviously above 88, they're up, you know, and have the other lines, but-
Yeah. Thinking it'd be, you know, everything from Cardinal, obviously not including Cardinal, but here go between Cardinal, Barbridge, Row Road and then C, right, or, I'm sorry, Bruce, you are wrong, B out there.
Saying that, we're just thinking it'd be that section over there pretty much.
That's kind of the day one, but that's where we would need, that's where we would for sure need to have definitive service line materials, anything, like I said, anything after 88, we can fill out the form and if we know the material grade, if we don't, it's, it's not as big of an issue. Obviously, we'd send the survey out to everyone just so we had the information.
I'm just, I've misread this and it just sounds like the assumption is that, you know, that's what they would have been putting in.
Yep. I believe it was 86, I think, is when they started to outlaw it, and then 88 was one kind of the hard cap.
That's to what, that's just lead?
Yeah.
Copper?
Copper, so, okay, so the, so the thing with the copper is, it's the soldering of the copper.
Okay.
So there's a lot of lead solder used in copper pipe. So copper pipe is fine, and today's copper pipe is just fine, but it's, it's-
I, I would pretty much guarantee anything after 60 was switched, because I was involved in an awful lot of that, starting about 58 or 60, and everything that I know of there was all switched, there was no copper, there was no soldering of anything from the meter to the, and if you look it up, you should be able to, the picture will tell that real quick and easy, too, because that is a switch fitting going into the meter, so we're clear with that as far as lead, there are some lead pipes in the town that were, but I don't know if it's-
Sure.
So it sounds like each, each service line will have to be recorded, but the item of interest is those prior to 88.
Correct.
So how are we going to, how are we going to make sure that we get this survey back from everybody?
Well, just spread the word, once we send it out, just trying to encourage people to fill it out, you know, we'll have a list of people, of homes that have it, because obviously we'll have the survey and we'll know what lines, we could always, if we don't get the surveys back, we can either send out, you know, a reminder or do a door-to-door type thing, you know, hang door tags, do something to try to get people to do it, I mean, that's kind of it.
How'd you do it in the other towns that you've already done? I mean, I would think you'd follow the same pattern, the same thing that you did.
Yeah. Some involve a little help from public works, just going, you know, knock on doors, hey, can I go see what you have for, you know, can I go check your meters, can I check your service line? Someone had like a service tap card already on hand that we could basically, you know, thumb through, get a sense for what services were, materials were, and then, you know, get kind of targeted approach of, you know, how do we go and grab that, that information? So some, some communities have taken, you know, done a lot of legwork themselves because they have the manpower, so they started going in homes, checking meters, just asking residents, you know, not forcibly going into homes, but you know.
Have you actually looked into what we have for documentation papers through Todd or anything before this?
Yeah, I've asked Todd, we've kind of tried to go through some stuff, and I know I have a file of information.
If you need help going through that, I'd be happy to.
So I don't, I don't know that-
Again, I don't know if that's legal or not, but I'll, I'll give you whatever I've got if that helps move this along, keep me informed.
Yep.
I was just looking in, in 6B, we only had 500 people in town, so it probably wasn't more than 100, 150 houses. So if we can get something, if there is any documentation on the, the building permits or something like that, that that would really speed this along.
I don't know how much of that Todd, that city still has.
I don't know whether they tracked any of that.
I know I talked to, I know Todd's talked to Dick about it, I don't know if, where that, how much of that, where that conversation ended up, so, I don't know, something got lost between here and the previous city hall.
Now, there was no requirement for documentation of that, and so I, that's why I didn't, I don't know the forms and stuff, I was never involved with the permits and stuff on that side, I don't know, but if there's anything I can do on that.
Any other information council would need? Would approve?
I, it's so limited online and everything, because there's no, if there's no law, you, I don't know how you can enforce no law, but-
The only thing they haven't, they're, they're saying they're going to enforce is the inventory, but outside of that, you're right, there's nothing.
You feel like there's a law that's required for us to do the inventory?
I think, yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what DNR keeps pushing, and EPA's pushing that really hard, is there's, there's regulations to, to do the inventory, but there's nothing that, nothing for after, to what to do with it, and they're not even requiring, like I, I mentioned, made-
I couldn't even find on there where it was a law that you have to gather the information.
It, that's, EPA is, is pushing it that way, so I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head where that, I can, I can certainly look at it.
Don't take this the wrong way, but it comes across like, oh, we're just giving you guys $15,000 to look at these lines and nothing could ever happen of it, but, okay, we have this information, but what are we going to actually do with the, with laws? It just feels like that.
Does it, I would just say, because I, I can see where you could be frustrated that the EPA is requiring every water system. We're providing water to people, which means we're regulated, right? If we weren't providing water, they would, couldn't touch us, but we are, we have a water system and they regulate that water system, and my understanding is the EPA has absolutely required a water system to provide this inventory, not knowing what they're going to do with it, not knowing what the next step is, but that we are required by October 16th to file something. But if you're not seeing it, council member, then I don't know what to tell them.
It's on our scope, it's January 15th.
It does say that in there, but it's not, there's no law to do that, that's the thing. I mean, usually the EPA-
The EPA has to regulate us.
Yeah.
We're, we're a system that is regulated by EPA.
The way I would see it-
But there's no law in the EPA for this, it's coming, it's still coming.
So many copper rules, a federal regulation published by the EPA in 1991 to limit lead and copper into public drinking water, and we're saying that this was an-
That this is an amendment to that.
An amendment to that federal regulation.
It's not, so, okay, so in, in terms of it's not a standalone law, but it is a part of the lead and copper rule group, it's a lead and copper rule revision.
And it, I googled lead and copper rule and the entire EPA standard shows up online. It's part of the CFR, the, it's the Congressional Federal Reg-
I've seen the CFR, but the CFR basically is just saying, taking samples of, of the water for lead and copper.
That, that is a part, and that's a part of the original, I mean, Todd has to take quarterly samples, I think it's quarterly samples of like, real lead copper, so that's a part of it, this is a new part of it.
And what it says is this was an amendment.
Yep.
So what did you, you called it in your, in the proposal, it's considered a, the revision, then?
Yep, lead and copper rule revision, and the date is January 15th of 2021.
Yeah, under the federal register, which is the government's document, the federal government's document, describes the-
Significant update to the 1991 lead and copper rule includes the following changes. Define, defining a lead service line, I mean, it's this, if you look up lead and copper rule 2021, it gives you the revised lead and copper rule, 2021 revised lead and copper rule, protect children in communities from the risks of lead exposure.
Right, to address potential impacts of lead in drinking water in communities, including through proposed lead service line replacement and public education, among other areas of the proposed rule.
Yeah, I mean, I'm on the EPA website and it's absolutely, it's their 2021 LCRR implementation fact sheet, describes the requirements that public water systems must comply with starting on October 16th, 2024, that line of the lead and copper improvement for person. These requirements include the initial service line inventory, notifications to persons served a known or potential lead service line, tier one public notification of lead action level, exceedance and associated reporting requirements. And this was 4/17/2024, the date of this faction. So I, my take on it and what I've understood is that because we have a water system, we are obligated to do this.
That's correct.
And if we don't have a water system or want to shut our water system down, then we would not be able to do this.
Correct.
So we can not do this if you shut the water up?
That would be one extreme solution.
I don't know if I can beat the whole.
Yeah, and we have received instruction on this in prior, prior years to, to get ready for it, to get ready for the deadline and to prepare for these requirements. The requirements were being formulated as the, as time has gone on and it sounds like what the spreadsheet that's provided has a required information, so it sounds like that's been formulated and looks like the rest, next step's up to the cities then to, to gather that.
So Nick, what does this mean? These requirements include the initial service line inventory.
That would be that spreadsheet that you're-
This is literally the contract we have.
So that, that description is the, it'd be the city, us filling out that spreadsheet that indicates what the lead ser, what the line, service line is for each individual home.
Initial, so wouldn't that be coming to the actual residents up until their point where they have service?
No, if you, if you dig into, I-
I have a great visual.
Okay, yeah, so that's probably right on the EPA's website.
Where's that at?
It's a fact sheet.
It's in the fact sheet?
Yeah.
I got, I'm right there, I can pull up the fact sheet.
It's called the fact sheet for developing and maintaining a service line inventory. I'd send it, send it. It's, it's really good, it's very visual.
I believe, I believe the way that they're using, they're kind of describing it as initial is they want it, and there, there are rules that say you have to, the cities have to keep the inventory post the October 16th date, and it's supposed to be more of a living document, so every time you add a service line, you add the information, every time a service line is replaced, you, you update the inventory, so it's supposed to kind of keep, keep, it's an ongoing process once you create the initial, or the, you know.
Have we been doing any of that at all in the past?
Nothing, nothing that's formal as this.
That's the first thing we need to do is initially make sure that we have that document on file, any future development, now we track that so that we don't have to back up on this.
Correct, and you, you have to make it a public document once it's completed. Some city, there's a popular, if you guys want to follow one of these, the larger cities have to make it findable, like on a, on a website type of thing, smaller, I think it's like 50,000 people or something. Smaller, I think it's like fifty thousand people or something like that, anyone less than that, it just has to be a public document that's available if people want it.
I guess.
What do you see?
You're not involved with the.
I did, just to have a good. Just curious.
I'll just, I'll, yeah, it's, it really is a nice one paper, so.
I'm looking at the, um, I'm not looking at what she, she was putting up there, but I'm actually looking at the fact sheet of April twenty twenty-four.
I mean, really, your scope of work outlines exactly the same steps as like this fact sheet, where it talks about inventory, you know, looking at your inventory, looking at records, you know, what paper records do you have, what knowledge do you have of your system, all the things you guys have been just talking about, and then where you need to, over time, going out and actually visually inspecting, and then sharing.
We went over all of this a couple of years ago already, you know, here, we had this all set up, and you'd already just talked this about that five years before.
Yeah, I've been talking a lot about it, and I, you know.
Well, you brought it.
Okay.
If you don't have to die in play, that wouldn't be a problem, right? They wouldn't have known about it, all right.
Well, it's, as the, um, original, uh, rule explains, it, it has been ongoing effort since the nineteen ninety-one original rule to remove lead from the drinking water. And so this is just another step to help ensure that that, uh, is completed, um, so.
Once kind of, it's kicked off, this, this round is really, let's push that, even though they've, you know, since ninety-one trended to, you know, removal. Took an unfortunate situation, where EPA gotta do something a little more drastic.
Would anyone entertain a motion to approve resolution authorizing the lead and copper service inventory with Snyder?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Do we have a second? Calling in for a second on the motion.
I'm reviewing the information that Sandy gave me, please give me some time to look at this.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Further discussion?
So this fact sheet just, even more information is actually created.
Okay, further discussion?
So, real quick, on the, after the sixteenth, I guess, just a couple of things during this process, can you keep, like, on the, like, at every council meeting, kind of just have a, like, send, you have to be at the meeting, send us where we're at?
Yeah.
How aggressive we need to get?
I, I can restart my engineer's report, that includes that, we've had a lot going on, so there's really a need for engineer's report, but I can restart sending that.
If we got to get to October sixteenth, we're, literally, we only have, like, two months, tops, really, to get this out there.
Yeah, because I, I would imagine we'd have something live till August, by the time we put it together, we have you guys review it, and, you know, workshop it, so you guys are, be familiar with it before we, we press the live button, and then, you know, we have a month or so, a month and a half or so, to get as much information as we can, so.
Okay.
What, what's wrong with, you've got the spreadsheet right here, you know, we had big copies of that, and just put, made them available to any citizen that wanted to fill it out, that we'd have that, to be able to forward that to you.
Sure, we could do that, too, we'd probably, we could make a cleaner, like.
I was about to say, the average person doesn't understand how to read that.
No, no, well, we, we can, we can just.
Make this one thing.
When we make our, our survey for the online, we can just create a paper copy of that, that you could have up at city hall, it'd be simpler questions, and then people could take it and fill it out, and then return it to city hall, type of thing.
Basically, all we want is that little short piece, and we can make, like I said, I think if we ask people to take the picture of it, and.
In that, yeah, that's, I mean, that would be.
The quickest, easiest way, then, then we could, you guys could deal with those pictures and fill out the report from that.
Certainly can, yes.
And I think, you know, like, I'll do a sample picture tonight, and you would be, you see, you've got exactly what you need there.
Yep.
All right. With that, I believe we'll be, proceed to the roll call, David Fisher?
Aye.
Jim Kane?
Aye.
And EJ Bell?
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, thank you. All right, moving on to reports, mayor's report, um, one of the projects that the city is cooperating with, with developers and the community development block grant, part of the federal government, it's a project for, to replace housing developed damage by the duration, uh, there, those units are having an open house, and on July twenty-one, there'll be notices posted around town, as well as on the website and such, but, um, July twenty-one, and public is invited to tour those homes. Uh, those chip seal work is now complete on the, uh, those, those streets that utilize that type of surface. Uh, there is some painting, some minor painting, uh, for the fifteen-minute parking area downtown, as well as some touch-ups to the, the city hall parking, remaining for the street work. And then, uh, I attended the AC cog meeting on June twenty-seventh, and would invite the city council to attend and sign up for the League of Cities Annual Convention. It's coming up at the end of September, and, uh, there'll be some information coming out for you on that, if you'd like to attend that. That completes my report for tonight. Moving on to interim city administrator report? Okay, thank you, council member reports. Okay, hearing none, any future item agenda discussions?
I already gave it to Sandy, but I was asking to, uh, re, review with the council on potential actions related to any item that we do a contract on. In other words, if we contract or rent something over a period of time, I'd like the council to review that, determine if they want to be the ones that, uh, want to make those decisions.
I, uh, after we spoke today, I did ask, and I have not gotten back from our city attorneys, the draft, I don't think I have a copy of the draft that maybe you guys do of, count of what they drafted for you, um, for the city council procedures. I think something like that would be a great place to put that kind of thing, and, uh, and I don't know if there was a financial, you know, I, I would see in a manual, something like that would say expectations for financial reports, the things we've been talking about, something like this, where decisions. We are required by law for leases over three years to hold the public here, we did that, I think, the X company or lease. We do, we, we rent, the other thing we've talked about since I've been here is the, some kind of broom attachment, that, that's leased, just like the, the, you talked about, so, um, you know, we want to review what that means. And I think a document like that would be good, so I'll get that and send it out to you guys again, and if you're interested in getting that.
Okay, and then, um, moving on to public input for items not on the agenda, comments are limited to three minutes, ask that, state your name, and you'd have three minutes. Any public input for tonight? Okay, moving on to announcing the next regular council meeting to be held July twenty-third here at the city hall, six thirty PM. And that being the end of tonight's business, suggest a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. If you want to use back, uh, or can I have them?
Make your motion in a second, all in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Right. Close sign? Hearing none, motion carries, all eyes, thank you, everyone.
Hey Sandy, just to get a clarification on something for these, uh, five tickets. I've been, I, it's been, and they're all the, all the potential, I mean, these are the, on Tuesday.